Hi, good evening and welcome, everybody. I'd like to call to order the Monday, July 24, 2017 regularly scheduled meeting of the Lake County School Board. Let's first begin by rising for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Thank you all once again very much for coming tonight. We'll start off first by taking a look at our agenda. I know Superintendent, we've got a couple of emergency items in front of us.
Yes, we do. You have three items actually in front of you. One is just a time change on 8.02. That was the approval of the TRIM notification. And then the two emergency items, including one out-of-state field trip item, there is no agenda item number on that, and one for the supplementary instructional support leader. This is a grant, so it's a time-sensitive grant for us to submit it back to the state to receive the grant funds.
All right, very good. And based on the time sensitivity of these, we'll go ahead and deem them as emergency items. Were there any other changes, amendments, or additions, deletions to the agenda that come from you?
None from me.
All right. How about board members? Any items?
Nope.
No.
All right. We do have a couple of public input cards specific to some items on our agenda, and one of those is 8.01, specific to textbooks. And the other is 9.04, the equity report. So we'll do those under separate consideration for public input. And with that, we're ready to move ahead to the approval of the amendments of the minutes.
I recommend approval of the minutes from the School Board Workshop, June 19, 2017, executive session for the IT security purposes dated June 26, 2017, the regular school board meeting June 26, 2017, and the regular school board meeting July 10, 2017.
All right. There's a recommendation from the Superintendent. Motion coming from Kristi and a second by Bill. Any questions or comments before voting? All right, and let's put it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries 4-0. And that brings us to public input. We do have one card tonight that was not specifically tied to an agenda item, so Courtney Franklin, come on down.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent. I just wanted to recap a little bit. I've been away in the Caribbean, so I had a better week than you did. But anyway, what I wanted to say, what I really wanted to talk about, as I always talk about allocations, and we know that allocations, we need more allocations and more allocations. But I just finished up summer reading camp. Summer reading camp, third grade. It's kids that get a one on the FSA that come to summer reading camp, third graders. Try to go to alternative promoted, take the SAT 10 again, try to go through portfolios and such. I got curious because after spending however many four weeks, four and a half weeks with these kids, I started to get curious about where they're going to go, where their future is. Because I've been doing this for a while. I've done summer reading camp for the last three summers, and I've been teaching for a while now, and I teach ESE kids, and I can differentiate a lesson with the best of them. But some of these, and I have learned to notice the difference between not being able to read and having a learning disability. And most of these kids, I don't know if you guys are aware, because you're not in the classroom all the time, but these kids had four chances to pass the FCAT, the FSA this year. The FSA, the first SAT 10, an I station point value, and also star reading. So if they didn't get through any of those, then they come see me, or four other places in county, three other places in county. So these are the ones that just aren't getting it. They're just not there. These kids, I could tell by, there was, you know, let's just say 20, there were different, it's a different number, but let's just say 20. Of those 20, say five of them are legitimately learning disabled. The other ones just can't read. They're already in third grade, and they're end of their third grade year, getting ready to be fourth grade, and they just can't read. So then I got curious about, I mean, different levels of not being able to read. They can read some snowball of the words, some are not very fluent, some can't comprehend all different levels of, they're not where they need to be. So I looked back, and the kids that just graduated in 20, not 2017, but 2016, when they took their, our graduation rate was 78 percent. When those kids took their FCAT in third grade, their proficiency was 71 percent. So I don't understand why we're so surprised by a graduation rate that's 78 percent when those same kids couldn't, or less of them were proficient in third grade. So that is a credit in my head to the middle school and the high school teachers who are pulling them up, because somewhere, there's some sort of a disconnect. Now, I looked back into our last, the state's is 80.7 percent from last year graduation rate. So in a lot of people's head, if it's 80 percent graduation rate, that means 20 percent dropped out. That doesn't mean, that's not what 20 percent means. Of those 20 percent, 3.8 actually drop out of school. The other 15 percent, of that 15 percent, 10 of them are still enrolled. So those, if our, if we could get those 10 percent of those kids, who are probably some of the ones that come to summer reading camp when they're in third grade, over that hump, they wouldn't be still enrolled. They have one more class to take, they have one more test to pass, or whatever it might be. So my thing is, get them sooner, get them earlier, get more allocations in the K to two. Because we learn to read, and then we read to learn. If you can't read, you can't learn.
Indeed, very well. And I think your point is well taken. One of the things I think this board has prided itself upon is putting those extra folks in the classroom early, starting in kindergarten, that we've got folks now working directly with our students who are struggling, and the idea being if they're not behind when they leave kindergarten, hopefully we can keep up, and their third grade teacher doesn't have to perform miracles and backflips to try and catch them up. So I think your point is very well taken tonight. Thank you so much. With that, we'll jump into the attorney's report. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of things this evening. One, I know you just got them Friday, but this is your first reminder to complete the superintendent's evaluation form, because we're endeavoring to get it completed by August 15. More reminders will be coming, I'm sure, but it takes a couple of days to put them together. The second thing is that I received an email from the attorney for the Lake Charter Academy, and they've requested mediation through the Florida Department of Education, excuse me. This is my first Department of Education charter school contract mediation, so we're just going to have to wait and see how it goes. But we'll be coming back to you on that at some point in time. I assume that we'll have to present, each present something to the mediator first, and then he'll ask for some specific information in the second round. I think that most of you all received an email from Julie Summerlin that originated with Mr. Carr regarding Round Lake. I just wanted to make sure that, as I get asked my opinion of different things, I'm basing my opinion on my understanding was that the board agreed that in order to, before it put a building, or allowed a building to be put on Round Lake, that it wanted to see a site plan with the new building and with the portables to make sure that there were adequate facilities and utilities and space to put the new school building on that property. And that we're operating under the assumption that we need to see that and you need to approve that before we give authorization to go forward with actually any construction. And lastly, Julie asked me to sort of get your opinions about moving forward with Miniola. We want to try to keep that process going, that we approve the building and the use of the building and the addition of the sixth grade, while the seventh and eighth grade, what was a sixth, seventh, and eighth application, which is now a seventh and eighth application, is still sitting out there, and we want to move it forward. And we were a little uncertain of whether, we don't want to have them submit a new application. Obviously, as far as I'm concerned, the only additional information they need to provide are those issues that were raised by the committee and the reservations that they had, and that my understanding from looking at the meeting was that we wanted to get some answers to those and work out the issues that those reservations raised. We were not going to go back to the charter committee, we were just going to get those answers and then work from there. Is that everyone's understanding as well?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have.
All right, very good. Excellent. We don't have any unfinished business tonight, so we'll move into the consent agenda.
Right, and we have two items that were pulled for public input, so I'm recommending approval of items 8.02 to 9.03, and 9.05 to 10.09.
All right, there's a recommendation from the Superintendent.
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Sandy. Any questions or comments before voting on that? All right, then let's put it to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries 4-0. We'll go ahead and deal with the, address the two items that were pulled for public input, and then we'll go on to the emergency items. Vance Yoakum, come on down, and perhaps we'll throw an extra minute out here, so perhaps you can address both topics at the same time. Does that sound all right?
Perhaps like that.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Except I started a minute ago.
I was looking through the agenda details, and the first one, 8.01, it's a textbook contract where a firm in Georgia is, comes down and collects all the excess textbooks, takes them up there, then compares them to whatever their personal list of prices that they will pay, no competitive bids, no stated payment schedule in the contract, and then they just pay you. And/or they issue you credit with a little bonus, and I don't even know if that's done. But after looking at this and all the holes, as a guy who used to audit contracts, and you're renewing this for the fourth year in a row, I would suggest that you not renew this, that you instead, if you have to extend it for a short while, but have the district auditor audit this contract to see the flow of the books in there and whether you actually are getting a deal. And I really wonder why you're not going to competitive bid for this after three years. You don't even have a price list that you get paid. There's no process for them to look at your original cost and maybe some sort of a discounted basis and a rate they're going to pay you, and they just say, well, we'll pay you whatever the guide is after we get the books up there and look through them. And I don't know the amount, because nobody mentioned the amount that's at risk here in this. How much are you receiving? And I would look at the other side, how much are you not receiving because of this process? So, and the other thing is, why have a contract and ship all these to Georgia when there may be some parents here, perhaps homeschoolers, that would like to bid on or buy some of these books and have some sort of a local book sale first, or at least offer it? Now, I realize, of course, that's a bureaucratic process, and, or it can be made into one, but my suggestion is if you have a list that you are to give to the Georgia firm that says, here are the books that we are sending you, and by the way, they don't buy all those books. There are others, they say, we're not going to buy, but we'll pay $60 a ton for them. So you're shipping them these books, and you have, and there's no idea whether they're turning around selling them for five times the markup. I don't know. To me, it's got a huge number of holes in that. Places I've worked, we'd never, ever have had a contract like that. The next one is item T904. It's the equity report. It's a report that goes on for about 100 pages. It lists a lot of things like, and this is a required report, the school district has to file, that shows demographic ratios and how you're improving in different groups, and to use their terms, black group, Hispanic group, and so forth. And as you may or may not know, David, if you have the projector on, if you can turn the projector on, David. Thank you. That chart right there, it's on page eight. It shows the statistics and the fact that for, you have a demographic number, 24 percent of your students, or 10,300 of them, are Hispanic, and yet you have hardly any Hispanic faculty, administrators. I mean, I'm just flabbergasted, because when I started work in California, that's when they put through all the requirements, and they had mandatory requirements. You had to hand, you had to have certain ratios of demographics even then, and that was back in the 70s. The other thing is that if you look at that also, you'll see that the female ratio is way higher than the male ratio compared to the students. Students are about 50-50, male and female, and yet you have only 20 percent male students, teachers, faculty members. And I'm amazed, I don't understand, is there some waiver that happens here? Because you're all worried in this report about the number of people being able to play in sports, for instance, and it be balanced between the genders, but yet I'm amazed somebody hasn't sued you unless there's some sort of a waiver on the demographic imbalance that I show here.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
First item.
Chairman, can staff speak to the concerns events?
Mr. Franklin.
The textbook, not this, the other one, the textbook one.
Oh, the textbooks.
Yeah.
8.01.
Yes, sir. Truthfully, by the time we get rid of textbooks, they're pretty well out of print. We have usually kept them well beyond their lifespan, according to some of the standards. We had to find a company to come and get rid of them, because we have tried, kind of the garage sale idea, invited our private schools and our homeschool folks to come and go through the stuff before we shipped it out. This was the only company that would come and say, they come and pick it up, we don't pay the shipping side of it. But otherwise, quite frankly, at this point, it would almost go to the dump. So we wanted to find a way. Now, we can certainly go back and take a look at it and do something else with it, but that has been the best option we had up to this point.
Is this a time-sensitive, or could we look at it?
No, sir, it's not time-sensitive.
Okay.
And we're talking, these are discarded, these are discarded textbooks because we're adopting a new textbook series.
Yes, sir.
So these books are, at least have been used for a minimum of six years, and may not even be aligned to the current standards. So I guess that would be a challenge for somebody to come in and say, I want to buy a book that's not even aligned to the standards anymore and use that.
Correct. And that's, again, why we've had tried, you know, homeschools, some of the private schools, just again, to let them know, because nobody wants to throw a book out. But at some point in time, they're also huge to store, and if they are beyond their useful life, we need to get rid of them in some fashion.
And to be quite honest with you, I'm not, I'm not as keen about having a book sale or giving away the books, and I agree that if there are six-year-old books that are out of, I don't think anybody's using them and following the standard. What I am questioning is, is if we're getting $60 a ton, whether or not that is a competitive price, and we haven't shopped it in four years. I'm looking more at the salvage, quite honest, than I am whether or not we could be selling these or having book fairs.
We can send it back out if that's what you'd like.
Well. Because we're looking at recycling, basically. We're looking at.
Effectively, yes, ma'am.
At a company, like Georgia has a ton of paper companies, so they're paper recycling, basically.
Yeah.
For the most part, yes.
And is $60 competitive? I mean, if we haven't shopped it in four years, maybe we, at least maybe we should look at it. I don't disagree.
That's fine. Whatever you'd like.
Well, it's not just to me.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
So is that the preference, the board? Shop it out?
I don't mind. I can tell you that the paper industry runs on pennies to the dollar on their margins, so I would be surprised if we get a great deal, but I'm pulling it dry.
Only because we haven't, only hearing that we haven't looked at it in four years. I mean, that just tells me that maybe a glance, I'm like you, that maybe it's even less now. I don't know. But we don't know, because we haven't looked at it. So I'd prefer that we look at it if we could.
I would ask that you withdraw the item then.
Yeah, we can withdraw the item and certainly look at it. I'd also, I would wager to bet that we don't have a lot of vendors knocking on our door wanting to remove these items, and our space available in the warehouses is, as new textbooks roll in, we do need to get some of them off the shelf. I would propose that maybe we look at it with the renewal of the next contract, unless...
That's fine. Yeah.
The question I would have, and we're in between right now, but the warehouse where we're storing these out in Howie, just how much room do we actually have out there? I mean, because these do take up a lot of, that's where they're at, and these do take up a lot of space. So if we're trying to bring other things in at the same time, we have something in the way. And I'm not against us putting this back out, but I'm just saying that in the future, this is something we, we're taking up space right now that we need for something else.
So the time sensitivity of this might not necessarily be tied back to the contract period, but more so in that our own space restrictions.
We have things that need to go out, so things can come in to take its place and be utilized that space.
So we're receiving textbooks right now, I imagine.
Correct.
And so that's why that's here, so that way you can.
The gymnasium is only so big.
Yeah, that's right, that's right.
But I didn't hear that. Is that an issue? I didn't hear that it was an issue.
The space available?
Yes.
It's potentially an issue. I'd have to verify that.
If the space is an issue, then obviously we'd want to think of something else. I mean, maybe I'm not inclined to pull it. So it's important to have all the information. Do we have space or not space?
We, we're, space is an issue to store that, space is an issue.
Jesus, I'm sorry. Yes, space is an issue. You know, it's paper, so it's an organic material, it deteriorates, and it causes other conditions that, to abate those conditions, that potential storage of that with regard to getting damped and quote-unquote insects, it does generate additional concerns. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the contract has a 15-day cancellation period, so if we wanted to go look at something else, you could cancel it in within 15 days.
That solves that.
All right. Superintendent, do you have a recommendation to put forward for us?
I do. I recommend approval of item 8.01, and we will certainly look at the item to see if there are any other options within the next 15 days before solidifying that.
All right, there's a recommendation from the Superintendent. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
And a second by Kristi. Any questions or comments before voting? All right. Seeing none, then let's put it to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, that carries 4-0. And the other item is the equity report. Certainly heard the comments during public input, is there any information you might be able to share that?
I would say that certainly a more diverse teaching staff that reflects the population in which we serve is always a priority. I know that that is a major priority of our recruiting efforts, and we'll continue to work towards increasing those demographics.
You know, I guess the one thing I would care to throw out there is that, I mean, there are just certain professions that lend themselves to, you know, historically what you find. You know, I was the only person who needed the male restroom on the first floor of my school, you know, and it's not that we were, you know...
There's not a whole boatload of women scientists either.
You know, so I think it is kind of what you get, you know, but I appreciate your remarks about the recruiting efforts and certainly a diverse staff, it's always appreciated. Your recommendation on that one?
I recommend approval of 9.04, the equity report.
All right, there's the recommendation. Any motions?
So moved.
Motion by Sandy, a second by Bill. Any other questions or comments before voting on it? All right, seeing none, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries 4-0. We now have two emergency items to address. And we'll do these one at a time.
I recommend approval of emergency item related to the supplemental instructional support English language learner grant for Title III.
All right, there's the recommendation. Motions?
So moved.
Motion by Kristi.
Sorry, I meant a second for comments.
So moved.
Motion by Bill, a second by Kristi. All right, let's open it up for some questions and comments. Kristi, you want to go first?
Yeah, my only question is, are we, we're not currently changing the, the teaching chart, the chart of, the personnel chart, right? We're just applying for a grant.
That's correct.
So it would be if this, if the grant goes through, then we would hire this person.
Actually, it's more than that. It's 13 schools that are involved, from what I read on those, and that each school will have four hours per week for 36 weeks, and a camp, summer camp for 20 hours each in the summer. It's on page three. And my question was to what was being addressed earlier about the reading, does this kind of help address that as well?
Yes, and I believe that Ms. Pearson or either Dr. Weiskopf would be happy to speak to this, is their item, or...
This opportunity, this grant is a supplemental educational, is for teachers after school, so it's not a staffing issue as far as hiring after this. This is just for something to help the ELL population at the 13 schools identified there that were approved in the grant last year to continue that same process. The original grant was for those to hire a leader specifically through the district, but what was used last year was to hire teachers, leaders on campus to work with ELL students, and those gains show specific gains from the state, and the state allowed us to use that same terminology for the upcoming school year.
I'm confused, because if there's 13 teachers at approximately $5,000 per teacher, that's $65,000, and we're also hiring, and it's also hiring a specialist, and the total is $75,000, so that person's making $10,000 a year?
The person, the after-school, there's a coordinator that is going to be supplemental after school, just to support the teachers and provide them with professional development and the instructional strategies that are needed for the ELL students on those 13 populations, plus mileage for that leader, teacher leader, to go around to all, excuse me, all of the 13 schools to provide that support.
So are the teachers already in place and already working?
Yes, the teachers are already in place.
We've already hired them to do this?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I got it.
Thanks. Okay, thank you.
Well, I, that got me a little bit. 13 schools at 5,000, that is 65,000 instead of 55.
Right, but there's also in there for the teacher leader that is at the district level that is going to be supporting them.
No, I understand the 75,000 grant total, but just for the 13 teachers out to the side in the spreadsheet, it shows it 55,000 instead of 65,000.
Okay, it should be 65.
Okay. So that actually goes up to 85,000 now?
Well, no, because it's going to meet 75,000, because that's all allowed in the grant. That'd be refiguring in that table for the summary.
All right, well, I'm just a little concerned. And also, though, I saw on the second page of the handout that it says that this ends in June of 2018.
Yes, and that's the issue. Last year, these monies were given as part of a grant, it was renewed, but because of the timing and getting the money, it didn't start until March, so no one wanted to take that teacher leader position and lose their role within the district or hire out. They was not able to find someone that would take that position. So Ms. Pearson went to the state to do something different, which was the tutoring after school and doing the summer camp. Also taking into consideration with that money, the summer camp for the teachers in those 20 days as well. So the state approved that to use those dollars for the tutoring after school and the summer camp. The addition this year, because one of the things that they wanted to see was an actual leader that was supporting the teachers at the school. That is where that district person is going to come through.
Okay.
And this is a competitive grant, so that came out of grant, it's an initiative, and we worked together with that from Title III.
So without the coordinator, if the grant doesn't come through, since you just said it was competitive?
It is a competitive grant, so it's not necessarily, we have the opportunity, but it's not necessary that we will get it. We feel confident that we will, because our contact person at the state was in agreement with the scores that were improvement, showed improvement from those areas. The only area that was tested that was not improved was Algebra I, but with this after school tutoring for that specific population, those were significant gains. There were significant gains with that.
So what will they do if we don't, like, is there a backup plan?
No.
Okay.
No, they're continuing, no, there's no backup plan. There won't be anything set aside specifically for the ELL students. If this grant is awarded again, then those, they will continue the process that we did last year of having the after-school tutoring and supplying the summer camp with them as well.
All right. Any other questions? Ready to vote? All right, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That carries 4-0. And one more emergency item.
And I recommend approval of the emergency item related to out-of-state field trip to attend the Special Olympics in August.
All right, there's a recommendation.
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by Kristi. Any questions or comments before voting on this one?
Just a real quick comment. Congratulations to these 10 students to be honored to do this.
Yeah, I got word of this, and I was really proud of these kids. I heard it was a really amazing job that they did.
Indeed.[1792.42] Indeed, all right, well, it sounds like resounding support. Ready to vote?
Just one other thing, too, and also the coaches and the parents, don't want to ever forget the parents, but the coaches also that are there supporting these kids, too, so we want to remember that. Thank you.
Indeed, all right, well, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, and that carries four zero as well. We have two items for discussion tonight, versus eleven point oh one, the final approval of the two thousand seventeen, eighteen Code of Conduct and Policy Guide.
Yes, sir. The item before the board is final approval of the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Code of Student Conduct and Policy Guide. If there's anyone that wishes to speak to this item, please come forward to the podium at this time. I don't see anyone coming forward. Mr. Chairman, I believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
Very good, thank you very much. Superintendent, your recommendation, please.
I recommend final approval of the seventeen eighteen Student Code of Conduct.
There's a recommendation, any motion?
So moved.
Motion by Bill and a second by?
Thank you.
Sandy, there we go. Any questions or comments before voting on this one? All right, final approval, here we go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. That one also carries unanimously. And then finally, eleven point oh two, which is also final approval, this one of policy seven point six one, the internal audit process.
The item before the board is final approval of school board policy seven point six one, internal audit process. If there's anyone here this evening that wishes to speak to this item, then please come forward to the podium. I don't see anyone coming forward, Mr. Chairman, and believe it appropriate to close the public hearing.
All right, very good. Madam Superintendent?
I recommend approval of item eleven point oh two, final approval of the school board policy seven point six one, internal audit process.
Very good, any motions on the board?
So moved.
Motion by Bill.
Second.
And a second by Christie. Any other questions or comments before voting on this one? All right, then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay, and also unanimously, four zero.
Mr. Chairman, since it is a policy, I just want to make sure it's clear on the record, I think it's supposed to. We called it the internal audit process, and the title that's listed is the Internal Audit Just to clarify that I believe those are referring to one of the same documents.
Right, right, and board members, of course, have the opportunity to preview the materials on board docs, so I think that they, I think as, I think it captures the essence of what we're going for here. So, with that, we'll come down to the superintendent's report.
As you know, it's been a very busy summer. I want to thank the board members for joining us, is that a week ago, when you attended our summer leadership, and we had about two hundred and fifty school district leaders, the board was there. A great opportunity to set our vision for the upcoming school year and to find our focus, and so I look forward to sharing the outcome of that training and some of those priority goals in the, in the near future.
All right. Any letters of condolence tonight?
Yes, we had one letter of condolence sent to Lulu White, retired bus driver and mother of Diana White, school bus video technician in our transportation department.
All right, thank you, we'll keep them in our thoughts and prayers. So, we'll go down to the end here for some board member comments. Sandy, we can start with you.
I'd just like to say, in the workshop that we had there for the leadership, I was very much thrilled to be there, and especially whenever I walked in and everybody was clapping for me. But I found out later kind of why they were clapping. I guess it was thought that I was running late, and I was. But, but also, I really enjoyed it, and there's, I won't remember the whole gist of the little video, but the thing that stood out to me was the, the teacher that was being traded to another state, and she was driving a nice vehicle headed that way, and others were that were being top candidates, in other words, it was like the draft pick. And you know, and that's what it is great, whenever we have teachers and staff, that is that way, that other counties are trying to take them away from us, but we want to keep them, and that's what we need to do. And I saw here recently where we lost a teacher from Taverries High School that went to another county, and I don't know all the reason there, but I know she was an outstanding teacher, ESE teacher at Taverries High School, and did a remarkable job there, and she'll be missed. But it's things like this that I would like for us to look at, and I know we're trying to be as competitive as we can with salaries, we need to look at all salaries, not just the teacher salaries, but also our support staff, but that we don't become a training ground only, that we're teaching them and training them to go to another county making more money, and we're taking the loss because we've trained them, and now we've got to find somebody else. We need to make sure that we can look at our budget and look at what we can do to make it work. When I was at the city of Taverries, one of the problems we had with the police department was we were training people to go to other departments, and finally, we were able to make the salary compatible where we could keep our employees, and that's what we need to try to do with our people. But I appreciate our staff, we're getting ready to start a new school year in just a couple more weeks, and I would ask that we would make sure that everything is ready to go the first day. Right, Mr. Carr?
I'm working on it.
Right, Mr. Wheeler? All right, because you two make up a major part of what needs to happen in our system, and I know you guys are working hard, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, Christie.
So, speaking of draft picks, I just wanted to send out a congratulations again to Tammy Jenkins, who got Teacher of the Year for the State of Florida. She was basically draft picked right out of Leesburg High, and we'll be missing her this year, as she tours the state and I guess shares her teaching expertise. She's an amazing woman, and she will be missed this year, and, but I think the new principal, Mr. Randolph, is going to be an amazing principal for Leesburg High School. He has so much energy, and he just, he just exudes excitement and exuberance for these kids, and I'm really excited for the way, for the direction that Leesburg High School is going. I wanted to let the board know that over the summer, at the beginning, sorry, at the beginning of the summer, we, the district stopped the contract with ECELC, and I've worked over the summer with Julie Summerlin, or she's done most of the work, obviously, and to, ECELC was a program, thank you, that, ECELC was a program that gave federal money to low, our working, low, our working class, our low working-class parents that needed extra funds in order to pay for our ELC, which is our after-school care. So, we dropped the ECELC because of the federal requirements changed for our ELC. It's terribly confusing, but what she and I have managed to work out is that, is that there is funds and financial aid available, financial assistance available to parents that need it with ELC, and that parents that need this aid just need to speak with the administrator at that school. She will be talking with, she'll be sending this out as like a little letter to the parents, and, and I think, I think that, I hope, and I'll follow up with her and see how the program works as we roll this out, because the federal requirements for ECELC were too much for us, for the district to manage, because we had to, like, all of a sudden fall under preschool rules. So, I think, I think that, that will be a good way of handling it, and also, in addition to that, Leesburg Elementary is becoming a twenty-first learning center, and so students in the Leesburg area can go to Leesburg Elementary for after-school care for free, like, I think a hundred students, so that, they'll be able to handle it that way. I wanted to thank the district and the board for supporting the new recess law. Like, I know it's a law, but you guys just went for it and dove right in, and I'm really excited for all the parents who worked so hard to get recess in the state, and for me, who doesn't have to work on it. I can move on to funding. Finally, I really enjoyed the district leadership workshop as well that I attended. I just think we're moving in such a great direction in our county, looking at the whole child and looking at moving all of our kids forward and making them ready for whatever the twenty-first century brings them. I'm just very excited, thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill?
I only have a comment, and that is, the Dancing with the Stars is this weekend, it is Thursday's preview, I think there's some tickets left, there is Friday, which is the first show, and then Saturday. So, anyone that wants to support our education, I would encourage you to come out and support these community leaders that volunteered their time and their tap shoes to dance for us. So, we'll see y'all there.
All right, very good, and I'd like to start off tonight by acknowledging my friends from Sawgrass Bay Elementary who made really quite a trip, it's almost like a whole other county by the time you, you make your way from down south all the way here, but I think I can speak on their behalf to say that they're probably pretty thrilled that we, in tonight's consent agenda, approved option number one of our five-year capital plan, which paves the way for us to build a new school down that way. Goodness knows, with all their students, they feel the pressure of how difficult it is to navigate that many students, and to be able to serve them well without, and to be able to do it efficiently. So, so I think that that is, is very well done on our behalf to stay that course, once again, not adding to the debt, but being responsible in adding student stations as we can. And then I'll throw out a little embarrassing plug here, the last few weeks, we've heard of this, this great incentive to draw students to the library to get them to read, chasing after these colorful rocks, you know, one of the teachers we've heard involved in that is Christine Palmer, she's here, so Christine, wave and, wave and say hi. There we go. So, I admire your artistic talents and abilities, I wish I could paint a rock that nicely, I've tried. Mine look like a bunch of, I don't know, jumbled soup, but I tell you, it's been great in terms of being able to get students out to the library to read over the summer, so kudos to you and everybody who's helped you with that. I'd also like to acknowledge a new face in the room, and that is Carlos there, he and I have had a couple of interactions during the week, he's going to be covering us from the daily commercial, and I think the couple of articles that you put out so far have been fantastic and painted us in a great light, capturing the essence of the spirit, particularly with that recess, and getting that spirit out there, and how we've embraced that, so thank you for that, and board members, now you know who he is when, when he gives you a call for, for some comments and questions. It's hard to believe that this is our last regularly scheduled meeting before the first day of school, so I know every year I like to throw out a little public service plug for all those in the, who will be navigating the streets, pay attention to those giant yellow buses. It seems like every year, when we come back, we see a string of incidents where other vehicles have made contact with our buses, and I know they've got flashing strobe lights on the top, they're painted yellow, they've got, they've got stop signs that come out, it's just hard to do any more to those buses, other than, please, just encouraging our, our citizens to be aware of them and watch for the students that go along with those buses. We'd love to be able to open smoothly and safely for all of our students in a couple of weeks. With that, I'm looking forward to all the teacher appreciation breakfasts that welcome them back. I'm looking forward to seeing a host of well-rested teachers as they prepare for another year that will be even better than the one we've had. And finally, just to piggyback on to the comments about the Destination Lake event, I know I shared some remarks at our workshop last week, but I finished part one of the focus book, and I'll tell you, it is fantastic to talk about being able to get back to the basics and to pull initiatives off the plates that, that just, I mean, when, when your plate looks like you've gone through a buffet and taken well more than you need, you just can't manage it. And to be able to go out and champion such an easy message, such as focusing on what we teach, how we teach it, and authentic literacy, it's, it's an easy no-brainer to champion. So, I applaud our administration for taking that approach and simplifying things, I think that's going to be very welcomed. Yes.
I would be remiss if I did not mention this, that Taverries Chamber of Commerce this year is doing a first time.
That's right.
For our teachers at Taverries Elementary, Middle School, and High School, and I just want to say thank you to the Taverries Chamber.
And Asta Tula.
In Asta Tula, there were so many that they were inviting from Asta Tula as well because of where they're having it at, so I appreciate them doing that, and all that contributed to make this happen. Thank you.
That's right, that's right. I think there's no way we could thank the chambers enough for how welcome they feel the teacher, make the teachers feel during this, this back-to-school time.
You just have to get them to do something for the support staff as well.
That's right, that's right. Teachers are nothing without their support staff, I can attest to that. And then finally, next week, the thirty-first, we've got our first budget hearing at five oh one P.M. Before that time, we're going to schedule a workshop so we can have a little discussion about the budget after we've had a chance to all have our individual meetings with the staff, and we've got a couple of topics that'll be coming up in the near future on our workshops, notably looking at revising our superintendent evaluation, the one that's out there now is measuring the first hundred days, or really, the period up to June thirtieth, based on the hundred-day transition plan, but then the version going forward is going to, you know, represent more ongoing leadership in the district. So, I think when the superintendent meets with us, she's going to share a couple of recommendations for ways that's, we could perhaps capture that essence going forward,